We're just going to have a word of prayer before we call the meeting to order.
Our Father in Heaven, we're thanked for many blessings that was bestowed upon us. We're thanked for the beautiful day and the opportunity of living in this beautiful town. We're thanked for our citizens and the good people they are, and we pray that we'll make good choices for them. We say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Well, today we have our regular council meeting, the 20th day of May, and we recognize our media, Corey Macalusi, and we recognize our two delegations right there. And I should have your names, Sam, and we have Trudy also there for the Festival of Light. All right, so we have an agenda. First of all, let me tell you, we have two councillors that are excused for the moment. One will come a little bit later, Councillor Brown. Councillor Bangry, we are not sure that he will make it for this meeting. All right, so we have the agenda. Any other things that you feel need to be added to this agenda? If there are questions, we can put them under questions. Okay? Otherwise, seeing none, I need a motion.
We've to adopt the agenda.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much. All right. At this point, we have Sam Mason, who is here representing the Voice of Albertans with Disability. Is this there to give us some information regarding what municipalities can do better in order to satisfy the needs of our disabled people in town? So, thank you so much. If you'd like to come to the pulpit, there you go.
Hello? Oh, there you go. Okay, so, as I was saying, when I got in here, the town of Cartstone, as I was driving through, already looks like there's some very really innovative things for a town of this size especially. So, this presentation might be a little in vain, but I will hopefully give you some information that will help you. So, we got a grant from the federal government for National Accessibility Week, and we have it for three years. So, this is the first year of the project, and we were working to look at how municipalities and accessibility kind of go hand in hand. We want to look at bringing accessibility into the municipality level as there's a bill being passed at the federal level, so we can hopefully maybe apply that pressure to create a provincial act as well, as there's four in Canada already, but Alberta's not one of them. So, that's something that we hope to do, and then we have sort of all levels of accessibility across all levels of government. So, we use, we have just some kind of context here. Fifteen percent of the global population is estimated to have a disability. That means there's probably half a million people in Alberta, and when we discuss disability, we discuss physical, neurological, psychiatric, cognitive, and learning, not just the physical, which is where a lot of people go. This is the definition we like to use. Canada doesn't have a definition of accessibility at this moment, but I interpreted this, they do define barrier and they define disability. So, I use their definition of barrier and disability to reword it as the removal of any barrier to anyone experiencing disability. It is important to note that disability, again, does include the physical and the mental, but also it is including addiction, and it includes mental health as well. And, so, this was our survey that we did, that you were a part of, and we really appreciate that you answered that. That obviously means that you are already making, thinking about accessibility, and as I said, you obviously are. There's a lot of municipalities who sort of brush it off as being too expensive and too difficult, so we really appreciate that you are already making a lot of steps. That's really great. Oh, we sent out an open question survey by email and phone. We sent it to 30 people and got 12 responses. Eight were towns and four were cities, so we have a pretty good kind of representation there. The population ranges from under 2,000 to over a million, and we got responses from 44% of the total land area occupied by municipalities, not of Alberta in general, but just occupied by municipalities. The limitations, where we were able to only contact 11%, which hopefully in the next years will grow. We only got responses far north as Athabasca, so there's a bit of underrepresentation from the north, and there was no villages or summer villages that answered our survey. So, some significant findings, I'll leave them up there for you. So, the main kind of takeaways I got from our answers was that 42% of people, so almost 50% of people or municipalities, said that they didn't have any official bylaw or policies in place, but 75% said they had some kind of unofficial or ad hoc policies. And that says to me that there might be some kind of catching up to do in like official legislation, but most municipalities will acknowledge and work on something as it comes up, which is really great. And then, the other really big one for me was that old infrastructure and funding are cited as the hugest barriers, and that's true in a lot of, a lot of situations. So, from here, I have some suggestions that maybe you haven't thought of, maybe you have. We have the website accessibility, so whoever designs your website, if they go to that accessibilitystatementgenerator.com, it has a checklist to check off every accessible feature that you may have, and then if you don't have it, it'll ask you what you are doing to kind of circumvent that, and then it will automatically generate an accessibility statement for your website. So, if you have anyone technically savvy that can go through that, I went through it, and I don't understand half the thing it asks me, but if you have anyone technologically savvy, they can, it also will just give you kind of the website content accessibility guidelines, which is the sort of universal, like acceptance of what's accessible of a website. It gives you all of those, so even if you're going to redevelop a website in the future, you can then look at those guidelines and figure out what you kind of need to do. Accessibility policies are another one that we kind of talked about. The way to sort of do that is prepare, create a policy, reevaluate and revise it. So, I know that you already have a committee sort of kind of committed to this, which is my third point, but all of those things that got brought to you, if you can then maybe create some kind of policy moving forward for potentially renovations down the road, how they might need, you might want to install an induction loop at the museum, or whatever that might be, you may want to, you want to instill some kind of policy, see if it's working, and then maybe every five years, you revise your accessibility policy, and that just sort of makes sure you're held accountable to your commitment to accessibility, which again, speaking to this room feels like, I don't need to say that, you're already doing really well. And then, yeah, the accessibility committee, which I saw that you already have some people that go and address the situations, bring them to council if you maybe weren't aware of them, so you're already working on that, and that's incredible. I heard that it was maybe a senior-run organization, so maybe if you wanted to kind of, because as you were saying, like children with disabilities, maybe we could get kind of maybe like a youth facet of that, which would be interesting, and then they could be like, this is what I experienced. And then accessibility plans, so that would be creating an accessibility budget, whether that's $100 this year, and just growing that and kind of working that into your, when you're making decisions. It's like, well, if it's $50 more to get this induction loop put in versus, or widen this hallway, it's just creating kind of that small budgetary inclusion. And yeah, that's my presentation. I will take questions.
Thank you so much for that presentation. Yes, we are definitely working towards improving life for all less able people, but for us, it's probably, at this point, more regarding physical disabilities.
Mm-hmm.
In a sense that we have a budget set aside to improve sidewalks, make them more accessible.
Yeah.
For people who have motorized kind of vehicle. To go on that. And we had, we had that money committed on a yearly basis, and every year, we try to do so many curb and reduce so many curbs.
Yeah.
So, that is something that is embedded in a budget. We are definitely aware that there are other disabilities. We work in conjunction with the disabled, the societies that deals with disabled people. We support them through the recycling effort, in a sense that all the recycling proceeds are given back to their society for their people. And we have a few initiatives of that sort. The mental and emotional exist in our town, too, is through addictions, is definitely more difficult. We have supported the creation of the clinic for rehabilitation of people with addictions, and we have worked in conjunction with Alberta Health and with the pharmacies, local pharmacies. So, there is a lot that we have done. We are not where we want to be, but we're on a path.
Yeah. My main thing that I always want anyone to take away, because I do the accessibility assessment, I'm the accessibility assessment coordinator for Voice of Alberta with Disabilities. I always just want to say it's one day at a time. Everything you do helps, so honestly, as long as it's, you're continuing on that path, it's a really great thing. A few other kind of just small things to keep in mind for, just like when you're, an induction loop I mentioned, does anyone know what that is?
I'm sorry?
An induction loop?
No.
So, it's a loop that would go around this room. It's a wire. Anyone with a hearing aid can then tap into that loop, so any background noise would be cut out. So, those are not very expensive, and you can usually buy one, and then if you are having a theater event, maybe you can lend it to the theater, or whatever it may be. So, those are sort of some low, a low-cost option for people with hearing impairment. And then, just another kind of big one I like to touch on is just tactile strips for stairs and landings. It's just ensuring that either there's a color differentiation or a...
Yeah.
Yeah, so those are just two that, I know you were talking a lot about like mobility devices, so it was like, as I was thinking about that, I was, those are two kind of pretty easy ones, like if you're going to be redoing stairs anyway, to just kind of throw that in there. So, those are two that I would just maybe bring up if you wanted to kind of expand that a little bit.
So, on your website, are there suggestions, in a different, on your website, do you have ideas offered regarding the different type of disabilities that you might encounter, and what municipalities can do?
We don't have it on our website, because we offer accessibility assessments as a fee-for-service model, so we...
I understand.
Yeah, so we do that, but you can always email me, like I gave you my card. If you are doing those renovations, I don't mind offering that insight at all. So, you can feel free, if you're about to do a renovation and you just want to drop me an email and be like, this is sort of what we're thinking, I can be like, have you considered this, this, and this, if you want, that's totally fair. I felt like I had something else, but I lost it. But yeah, feel free to email me with any questions.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Councillor Court, you had a question?
I don't know if the council's aware of what some of our people are doing with Challenger baseball. Can't mind her, my son, Van Court, went to Vancouver. The Blue Jays are sponsoring it, and there's, I think there's at least 18 children now that are involved in Challenger baseball. So, things, it's getting out there, and we're talking disabilities from kids that can't walk, and they carry them down to first base to, to...
Yeah, I've seen that.
So, there are things happening.
There's blind hockey now, which is really cool.
All right, so thank you so much for your presentation.
Yeah, if anyone has any questions, please feel free to email me. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. All right. And Jeff, I have the, I have the portfolio here. All right, so we're going to prepare ourselves for our next delegation, and are you going, Trudy is there, but you are there too. Who is presenting?
Heather James.
Heather is presenting. Okay, so Heather James is going to be presenting on behalf of the Festival of Light.
Awesome. Thanks for having us today. So, it's, you may or may not know, Festival of Lights has been going on for, well, we've just finished five years, and thanks to council and the town of Cartstone and also the county, it's been a very, very successful event, and we couldn't have been able to do it without council and the town's help, so we're grateful for that. As we've grown this event, we've been holding it at the Remington Carriage Museum, and it has grown every year, so we're over 1,600 people attending. We've literally outgrown the building. And there's also been a lot of discussion amongst commerce and people downtown. They would like to see events moved to Main Street, so that they can involve businesses and other people can get involved, and we've had feedback as well, that it's tucked back in, back in the Remington, and not a lot of people always go back in there. So, as we've met with the committee, we are in the, we've applied to become a society, so that is a long process, but all the paperwork has been submitted for that, and we are looking to bring it to town instead of just at the Remington. So, we're looking to expand the event. So, what that looks like for us is, is we're going to need a little more help. So, right now, we've booked the civic center to do the carnival part of it, so if you've attended the event and you're familiar with what we do, there's a lot of activities for families, but it's very much geared toward young children. And then, on the second evening, we've been holding a seniors' night for a nativity walk, and they can come through and have donuts and cider and things, and it's a really nice evening. So, what we're looking to do is expand it to be a little more inclusive with the businesses in town, with also teenagers and all different sizes of families, instead of just small children, and then also geared for seniors and just empty nesters as well, so it's not just a small family event. So, the idea is that we're going to move the event to a Friday night. What that'll allow us to do is also encourage commerce from other, or not commerce, but traffic from other communities to come in, and then it extends the hours, and then, and then hopefully downtown, like the chamber can get involved and maybe work with like a Moonlight Madness, where shopping can be open, which then involves so many more demographics, right? We've rented the Tanner Center. We're going to do the nativity walk there, and that's going to be on the Saturday night, but we're going to have it open on the Friday night and the Saturday night, so people can, can go there. And we've been in contact with the theater, and they'll be having some things going on. We may or might not work with them, but either way, they'll be open that evening, so we're trying to work with as many people in town to get this to be a whole community event. So, what we're asking council for today is the help to, to make, to bring it downtown. Right now, we have the big giant tree. It's about 20, 20 some odd feet high. It's the one that's been done at the Remington. We'd like to move it from the Remington to a centralized location downtown, and what we were hoping for is, is actually the card home. After visiting with them just a tiny bit, they own the building, but I understand the town owns the grounds for the museum, the courthouse, not the card home, excuse me, the courthouse. So, I'm pointing to the courthouse and I'm saying the card home. So, the courthouse, there's a lot of, there's a lot of area there, and we were hoping for permission to be able to put the tree out there and to light the trees. We'll provide the lights for that. And then, after we have like an opening lighting ceremony like we do, then we're very close in proximity to the Tanner Center, to the downtown areas, to here, for people to walk, and to be able to just go wherever in the community. So, that was one of the proposals, is that we put the tree at the courthouse museum, and then we also use our lights to light it up. We have some big displays, some light displays. If you're familiar with what we have, we have a, a big carriage and a horse that's been, that's all lit with LED, and then we have a nativity set, and they're, and they're really, really quite nice. And then we have some smaller pieces that are fun, like some wagon wheels that are lit up, and like some presents and candy canes, things like that. So, our vision, did you have a question?
Put all of that here, right?
No. Our, our vision was to maybe put the tree there, and then we have the front of the civic center, there's the library, and we were thinking about this being a little bit of a strip where we could light up some of the town buildings, not right on Main because it's Main Street and there's not a lot of room, but here, it's leading up to the temple, it's leading up to the school. It's still a very busy area, and you can see it from Main Street, and we could spread it out. And we would, we would like to work with council or the town and come up with a unified look of what we also would like to do. I visited with Leonard Nichols, and we would like to bring the lights on Main Street to all of the trees. If you're familiar with Main Street, there's all those trees lit up, but one of the things in our request is just to confirm the conduit condition, so if it's usable or not. Either way, Leonard felt like we could make something work, so we just were asking for permission to be able to work with him and figure out what the best scenario is. He also expressed a concern last year in December, when some of the business owners were trying to light up the poles on their own, and it wasn't very cohesive, and so we are hoping to create a very cohesive look, instead of everybody kind of doing their own thing and kind of look like, you know, a patchwork. We would like to make it look very cohesive and, and beautiful. So, as a committee, we're happy to fundraise and create the money and resources to buy the lights. We're hoping that council and the town will be able to provide the electricity for the, for it to be run. They're all LED, so the cost should be very minimal. We have a few ideas, but it would probably come at a later time, depending on how you feel about the option and who we would work with for that cohesive design idea, but like the tops of the buildings could be all lit up, all of the trees could be lit up, and it could just be very simple, but it could be amazingly effective. If we use white lights on the trees, we could also leave those up in the summertime, and so when there's theater and different things going on at nighttime, it could be a very beautiful addition to the town in the summer as well. So, there's that option.
Would you put the white lights on these elm trees out here on the thing, or?
We could. We have two kinds. We have multicolor, and we have white. So, really, it would be whatever design we felt would be appropriate to, to the overall look.
You're talking about all along from Main, from like, from the pawn shop up to the cahoon?
Probably from the Cahun Hotel, although as far down as we could, we'd like to see it at least until, yeah, the pawn shop.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, on both sides, all those trees.
Yeah, that's kind of the main...
I just happened to bring that up about a month ago, if you'll recall.
Good timing. So, that's kind of the section we're looking for. We have lights that we could put on the museum itself. We have lights that we could put on the civic center or the library itself, but obviously with any of the trees or the buildings, we're going to need help. So, part of our request as well is to, in the past, council has given us 100 hours of man-hours from the electrical committee for use of the bucket truck, and they've been so good to work with and gracious with us, and we would just ask for their help to be able to install, because we're not obviously capable of doing that on our own. And then, the last two things that we were thinking about is, one of the, we were trying to brainstorm of ideas, how we could get some of the teenagers in the middle group of people kind of involved, and not make it just for the old and the young, but for that, for those kind of middle-aged kids. Anyway, we were thinking about doing the skating rink, and the skating rink isn't getting a ton of use on the weeknight nights for public skate, so we thought if we got permission to have the building that night, we could do a black light skate, bring in some black lights, bring in a DJ. It would be a free skate night, but it would, it would just help give them something fun to do. It'd be totally different, kind of like a dance bet on ice, and it would be like six to eight type thing, or seven to nine, or, I guess it's a Friday, so you could do it whenever. So, we would, we would ask that we would have use of the, of the facility there and work with, work with them to be able to host something like that. And then, depending on whether the Remington let us know that the Don Remington sleigh does belong to the town, and we've tossed the idea around, it may not happen this year, but if ever there's a parade, like a lot of other communities, Pincher Creek, Fort MacLeod, they actually do a Santa Claus parade, and if that ever was an option, or just bringing Santa to town, having the sleigh at disposal if the weather permits, and the activities permit to be able to use the Don Remington sleigh to come and bring Santa in, or just bring him into the actual lighting event, something along those lines. Again, it's very much weather permitting and the idea, overall idea of how the event looks. So, there's that that we would need permission for. And then, the trolley rides. The town owns some really awesome trolleys that we, if the weather is really mild, that might be a really fun service to offer families. It could be a free service and just let them drive around, and if this is a little strip that's lit up and Main Street is lit up, then they can just take a little tour, and it would just be a fun, a fun thing. So, we're just trying to be inclusive of as many things as we can, but obviously, we need a little bit of help from the town. So, that's what we're here asking for, is, is help with the electrical side of things, permission to light up whatever buildings you see fit, and then help from in-kind for, from the electrical committee to help us get the lights installed. So, that's kind of our overall vision at the moment, and I can answer any questions that you have.
I, I think you have a wonderful plan, it's well thought, and thanks for that presentation. There are some questions that I have, for example, regarding the storage of your display of your lights, et cetera, if the Remington does not get any more of your services?
Sure, we've just barely taken care of that. So, we've actually purchased a 40-foot, is it a 40-foot? I think it's a 40-foot C-Can. We actually are renting a 20-foot C-Can right now, but we actually just purchased one, because the cost to rent and then to buy over a few years. So, we actually just purchased one, and we're in the middle of moving that this week. So, Remington doesn't store any of our displays anymore. We have, we store all of it ourselves.
So, that is something that was in the back of my mind, because I know that was an irritant over there?
Yes, yep. So, we have control and possession of all the things that we'll be using, yeah.
All right.
Where would that C-Can be at?
Right now, it's in, on one of our committee members, it's actually at the mill, the Saw Mill, so, at the moment.
It's not in town.
It's not in town.
That was a good answer. Councillor Brown?
I love your ideas, and I love the whole idea of it. We've talked about doing something. We love the lights. We love drawing economic growth and development into Main Street. I think that's just a wonderful part, and I love the idea of doing it in the wintertime, when we're kind of all blah and 40 below, and, you know, we're trying to get through that. So, I love your ideas. One of my questions is, so do you have, I've helped before...
Yes, you've been great.
But do you have a lot of volunteers? So, if, if the town were to give you 100 hours like you've requested-ish, do you have a lot of volunteers in your back pocket then, that is happy and willing to work with the town's schedule, whenever is good for the town, essentially?
Yes, we do. We have a little committee that's pretty dedicated, and as a society, we're, we're building our, our board, if you want to call it, and then we have a bigger volunteer base to pull from. So, Donna Stewart just joined us from the Remington. She's retired from the Remington, and she brings with her a lot of connections and volunteers as well. So, I think we're pretty, we're pretty covered, yeah.
All right, so if I understand well, what you are looking for from the town is to cover the cost of the electricity to run the LED lights, to try to see how we can light up the trees along Main Street, if the conduits are too old to work another system. Do you want some 100 man-hours for the lift to put the lights on the trees? You want, what about the, the room downstairs, the gym, I mean, that big space?
Oh, excuse me, yeah, we, I did put that on my list, so just, and I can fill out the donation thing on that, just so. We're up here, we were going to do some of our activities, and then down in the civic center, so, yeah, if the town would like to donate the facility use of that, that would be awesome, too.
The use of facilities, okay.
Yep.
And you were looking for the free use of the skating rink?
Yep. It's a free public skate night anyway, to my understanding.
Right. So, the DJ and all that, you're covering that?
We would cover that, yeah. Like, we would cover the cost of the LED and work all that out. It would be essentially like a rent type thing.
Now, you're talking about sleigh, sleigh rides, and you're talking about the trolleys. Those require horsepower? Do you have that?
Yes, we have access to some volunteers that have been very willing in the past to help us, so Dr. Jones.
Right.
People like that, that are pretty experienced, yeah.
So, you have that, and that's covered?
And that may be something that happens this year, it may not. We just kind of wanted to cover all of our bases and just see how it kind of, yeah.
Sure. Thank you so very much. And so, from what time to what time were, were you in a season trying to, the length of time, starting November the 22nd?
So, the event, this year, the event is the 22nd, right? So, we're planning now, and after visiting with Leonard, he's like, I need to know now, so his schedule can be booked, because it's very, very time-consuming to get all the lights installed, and then it takes, and then it also gives us an idea, the scope of our event. And then it takes, and then it also gives us an idea, the scope of our event, so that we know appropriate fundraising events to host and hold especially through the summer months because that's our optimal time to do that. So we're starting now, like we just never kind of stop. Does that answer your question or?
Going to keep those lights on right up to?
Oh, so we would keep them on to the end of December. That's, that's been the tradition. We would light them up on the 22nd and then we have kept them up until New Year's essentially. And then we turn them off just for the Christmas season.
Okay. Have you ever thought of having a period of time, if you're doing midnight madness? There are some towns where sometime you can divert traffic, traffic?
Oh.
And I was wondering if it would be worth trying. I don't know that you can do it, but maybe worthwhile trying.
Yeah, we'll take it. If that's something you're supportive, it's a great idea. We'll totally, we love it.
I mean, if it's a limited amount of hours?
Sure. Yeah, we actually had talked about blocking off Main Street for those limited hours on the Friday night just to make it very just hometown feel where you, like you're saying, divert traffic. And you have the Main Street, so there's not cars driving up and down and people can just be flowing. So we, we've talked about it briefly, but not extensively.
Because I do that when we have our parade, so.
Exactly, yeah.
I'm thinking maybe you might be able to go there.
A limited time, yeah. That would be wonderful. We'll take it.
Maybe it was a request.
It'll be kind of fun looking down the road. Have you ever gone to Shoto at Christmas time and see what they do?
No.
They have a Santa light, Santa vehicle parade.
Oh.
My wife and I were coming home at Thanksgiving two years ago.
Okay.
And so we were coming through Shoto on the way home and all of a sudden the fire sirens went on and everything. We had to pull off the side of the road. And all of a sudden we found ourselves, we were in the middle of a parade, so we had to pull off into a parking spot. And there must have been 20 or 30 vehicles, trucks and cars, pickup trucks and flat decks and everything. Santa was on one of them. And all these cars were lit up with all the lights and on their tires and on their windows. It was fantastic. And that's something, you could do something like that, it'd be awesome.
So if we incorporate a parade, great idea, yeah.
That would be really, really, really neat.
Jeff?
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions.
Absolutely.
Is there still some lighting up in the large trees at Remington that needs to come down?
So I didn't have it in my heart to ask because, because they spent so much time installing that. So we have, what we, what we did is we stripped everything from basically ladder height and down. And we, and we were going to take that. If the town is willing to lend us the help and Leonard didn't want to kill us for taking all of those lights on, we will take, we would be happy to have the lights to.
Because they're your lights.
They are our lights. We just, honestly, it was just so much work and I, we were kind of just.
But I think we voted at a meeting that it would, they would be left at Remington.
We did.
Would Remington like to use them?
Yeah.
They'll use them. They'll light, they'll light the Remington up. So it helps them, but we just, it was just so cumbersome and.
Sure. The reason I ask is, we'll just have to kind of gauge the total man-machine power need here, right? My second thing is, we have budgeted $2,500 for festival lights for 2019. I assume that's still a.
We're asking, yeah, it's a need and it's going to go all towards lights.
Okay, no, that's good, which leads into my last question. And you and I have talked about this briefly. If we find the conduit is simply unusable, we need to look at other ways to potentially light those trees. And now with the LED technology, there's solar, there's battery pack, there's some options. But it would require purchasing all of those, right? Because we don't have anything right now.
Yep.
If we can't conventionally string them and power them.
Leonard felt like he could. He felt, what he said is you could do is, so the conduit's in the ground and you would come up through the ground if that worked. And he said, if it doesn't work, then you can light the tree and you wouldn't even have the bottom section. It wouldn't be very aesthetically as nice, but he thought just light the top up and then string it across to the light standard. And he said he could tap into that. It was his idea. It's not as aesthetically nice to have the cords going all across and with the wind, but that, it's an option.
But they could be lights too. Those cords could be light, you know, draped.
I'm kind of feeling like.
Dangling lights is a danger.
Yeah, I agree. So that would be something we would have to look into.
I just wondered if there is some resources at the committee level, if there needs to be a bit of investment in some of that.
And we're happy to invest in those type of things. Like we spent quite a bit of money in the last two years investing in all of the, the programming stuff for all of these big light displays, a couple of thousand dollars to have them to be able to move and be animated if we want them to be. So we're, we're happy to make those investments. We're just looking how, you know, we need to make a plan to.
We need to figure out costs and that's maybe for our administration to help you with that possibly.
Yep.
I've got some old photos of cards in at Christmas time, but they did it back in the 30s and the 40s. I don't know if you've seen them.
Mm-mm.
But they had lights strung all across Main Street, all the way up the street to the, to where they used to have the tree. In the center there.
Yep.
And that whole Main Street was full. There must have been 1,500 people on the street milling around and stuff. But they had lights all the way up from the Kahoon Hotel right to that corner. You know, across, across the highway, across from pole to pole. It was awesome. But anyways, I'll find them and I'll email those to you.
Thank you. That would be fun.
They're really neat.
Trudy, you want to add something?
Just add to something that I don't know if we're clear on. So the trees always stayed up from the, from the opening ceremony right through to January as well. So just not the outdoor lights, but the decorated trees. And we feel like we've got permission to do that, correct? So that the civic center would have trees in there through the month of December for any events, any social, anything like that. People would come in to see those trees during the daytime. They'd be available for people to come in and look at the trees.
Okay.
And that's still, and that's even, I was just talking to Patricia, she's our tree decorator and that, that's still even in discussion because we've had a lot of business owners express interest of them hosting the trees. So we're still not even sure on the exact location of where they would be, but it's just nice to get permission and know what we can do and then we can keep moving forward, so.
Any other questions, council?
All right, thank you very much for your time.
And thank you for your desire to always embellish our town.
You're very welcome.
You have done a lot of good work. Thank you.
Very good, thanks guys.
Thank you to your committee too.
You can never quit.
Want to say for the rest of the council?
Yeah, we should.
All right, council, we need to go under item five, adoption of minutes. So the minutes of May 14, 2019, I reviewed them.
I'll make that motion.
And feel comfortable they're correct.
Adopt the council meetings of May 14th.
All in favor? Thank you very much. Let's go to bylaw and policy under six, bylaw 1685. If you remember, we had to start the proceeding of rescinding bylaw 1627. So today we could really consider further reading. Councilor Brown, if you want to get us going on this one, it'll be your baby.
Awesome. I would like to make a motion to receive first reading.
I think second, start at second today.
Second reading on bylaw 1685.
No.
Rescinding bylaw 1627.
Yeah, perfect. All in favor? Thank you very much. So now let's do the last motion to adopt bylaw 1685. Counselor Drew?
I'll make a motion to adopt.
Bylaw 1685?
Pardon me.
Yeah.
1685, third reading, rescinding bylaw 1627.
Okay. So this is a third reading for bylaw 1685. And if you remember, it was to eliminate one committee, the community in Bloom, who is now under the broader umbrella of Parkinson's wreck. All in favor? Thank you very much. All right, 6B, community donations policy. This is a policy that came out of the ICF, the inter-municipal work that we're doing with the county. The county is not ready at this point to give us a motion to adopt that policy. They want to wait that the whole of the discussion regarding the ICF is completed. As I don't want to do a piecemeal work on, on the ICF. So this is really for your information at this point. We will not need a resolution. We'll do a resolution later on.
If there's any feedback on it at this point, I'd appreciate that. There may not be. But I would like to have any feedback now so that we have our drafts exactly where they should be before they're brought forward for approval.
Okay. So on, on our committee, there is Counselor Sell, Counselor Crook, myself. We looked at it. We feel it's covered the ground pretty good. So I don't know if you have looked at it in detail, if you want to take two minutes.
What's the, what was the amount that each of us were going to put in?
Yeah, it's still, it's still not 100%.
You haven't got that yet?
No. It was, originally the whole idea was to have about $8,000 between the two communities. But that was four items that were asked from both community and they would have a percentage of that amount available to those who request donation. If a group, for example, would come and they knew it would exceed the amount that they could receive under that policy, they are still free to go to each municipality and seek support.
So who would administer this and who makes the decision on who's going to get the money, you know?
Yeah, it's indicated that it will be the ICF group that will be the one, that would be the inter-municipal that will deal with that. So there will have three from our town, three from the county, and the CAOs would be.
So if somebody comes and wants $2,000, are you going to have to get all six of you plus the CAOs together? To decide who gets the money?
If you read, if you read the way it's written, there are two intake periods during the year. So the committee will meet twice, not only for that, but also for other ICF items.
I could just jump in there. As it's prescribed, it's not the ICF committee.
Well, I thought it was the same people.
Two counselors from each.
Oh, then we have changed a little bit from the original. Okay.
What it has here is that there'd be two.
So I didn't.
Each municipality that would meet at the deadline, each of those two deadlines.
Okay, so I'm sorry about that. I still was going with the first draft.
I considered that, yes.
Okay, so I was still with the first draft in my mind. All right, sorry about that. So there would be two members of it, for the town and two members for the county.
So when you're talking intakes, so we have people all year round that are asking money at various different times.
Yeah.
And we bring it to council and we decide whether or not, you know, they, they give us a presentation and we decide whether or not we're going to give that money. Now how's that going to work under this format? That's, that's what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah, it, this, originally the first draft only had one intake. And I thought exactly the same way, thinking we need two intakes in order to make it work. So people would know six months ahead of time if they want to get a donation for a trip or something like that.
They gotta prepare ahead of time and bring that proposal ahead of time.
It's probably the best way to plan, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
This does not preclude us from, so in an emergency, if somebody wants, they found out two weeks before, our council can also make donation on that if we want.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah.
And so how this reads is, so for instance, the festival of lights was just here and we give them X amount of dollars. They would, would they be able to come and apply for this? Or is it?
Or is this over and above?
Okay, so here's a little bit where we're still a little bit fuzzy. The fuzziness is because we have sent some different item to the county regarding those extra fundings that we do. And they are not at this time prepared to look at those as the power, as the parades, as all that stuff. So this is still under contradiction.
If I may, if I understand as correctly, sitting in there, this is, this will help eliminate coming here, playing off against the county there.
Yes, exactly.
Did you go to the county?
Yeah.
That's what this joint committee will eliminate.
Yeah, so.
So last year, the high school kids came and they were going to be able to go to Toronto and we gave them $200 and they went to the county. So this would kind of be that.
Yeah, so together, together.
We don't have to worry about saying, well, did you go to the county?
Right.
That's correct.
Right. And they will be able to access a fair, fair amount of money. Okay? Makes sense?
Yeah, I like it. Yeah.
Okay, so we're not going to have a motion to support that right now because it's no sense. We don't know.
Any indication when the county's going to be ready?
No. Well, I can tell you, yes, September probably.
Okay.
The pigs fly.
Okay, so under 6C, noise bylaw variance. Here is an interesting request, but I think we need to look at the whole noise bylaw altogether while we have a chance. But let's deal with the variances. The variances are requested by two different organizations. One, the high school, who wants to have a night dance that might go later than 10 o'clock. And the Stakes, they want to do a dance for the youth and will go definitely above and beyond 10 o'clock. So the high school has done some homework and they're willing to do some homework is to let all the people around the neighborhood know what's going on. But they still want us to approve of the requests they have. And the stake would not affect as many people, but they're also willing to contact people.
I can actually speak to that because I was, this is me.
Good.
With my other hat on. And actually, it's wrong. It's not Lyons Park. It's Redford.
My mistake, sorry.
Yeah, so it's Redford because we're playing all of our games for the priest and laurels down there. And so we thought, once we had them down there, wouldn't it be cool to have, down there to have our dance on the field?
Oh.
Is what we were thinking. So, I know.
And would have preferred it in Lyons Park, to tell you the truth?
Yeah, well, it's not. So that's, that's where we're at.
Go ahead, Jeff.
I appreciate you clarifying that. I had my head Lyons Park.
That's fine.
You know, this one's an interesting one because like I put in the background, the bylaw doesn't expressly require a variance or it doesn't actually say that council can vary from time to time, but it's your bylaw, so I figure you have the ability to amend it. And it's one of those forgiveness rather than permission situations too, because we have events over the years that go past 10 o'clock at night. You know, you have family reunion events, you have community events. And it just so happens that the student body came and asked me about this and I thought, good question. And good on them for asking, first of all. They wanted to make sure they were compliant because they don't do outside dances, but this will be an outside dance. And so it got me looking at this bylaw saying, I don't really know what the answer is here. And then shortly after, the office was telling me that the stake was asking about doing the same thing. So there isn't a formula for any type of variance, but it stands to reason you can vary it. And then we have all these other events that don't ask for variances. And, and some of them we put on, right?
Are the fireworks, the powwow?
Yeah, powwow, fireworks, those kind of things. Minor soccer, a lot of times, and minor football will do games under the lights in the summer.
And the swimming pool?
The swimming pool might do a party late. You know, we've rented it to Epic before to do a teen party late at night. So we have all these things going on and we've never really requested variances. And I'm not really one that I want to go start fining people that are participating in these events unless it's, you know, you, you do get events, the, the rules there for a reason. You get in a densely residential area and somebody's just being obnoxious, you need some clout. You need a tool there, right? You need something to do. But then you can't just blindly ignore it when you want to. So I think this is probably a bigger conversation than these. So I think this is probably a bigger conversation than these two events ultimately. But I also wanted to be able to let, if council agrees, we let the high school, for example, proceed, knowing that they're not violating the rule because they asked to be compliant. They proactively wanted to be. In fact, they invited the peace officer to be at the event. So they, they want to be on side, right? And so it just presents this interesting kind of bylaw conundrum.
Okay, so council, from what I understand, it is in our power to allow for a variance the same way as it is with the land use bylaw, with the committee that is there, you can allow variance. So do you want to talk about that? That is one aspect. Okay, if you don't want to talk about it, put a motion forward.
A concern I would have is they're going to have to approach the neighbors. If the neighbors don't want it, then what?
Are you looking for consent or just to inform them?
That's, I guess.
My point of view is what we'll require, once we allow them a variance, we can require that they inform the neighbors.
Yeah.
The consent we give, the information is there to give.
Okay.
Does it make sense?
Yep.
On that as well, I think it also gives us the ability to, like, if somebody was going to have a big, huge concert in my neighbor's backyard, that might tick me off if it went till midnight, right? But if they came and they asked council, we would have the ability to say, you know, I don't think that is appropriate for this area that you're asking for it. So it gives us the opportunity to evaluate each one, does it not?
Yeah, but I mean, any neighbor who does not like no, noise.
But it's the same thing as this, though.
Exactly.
So.
Yes.
I used to live up by Redford Park and they had events up there at nighttime. Oftentimes, they'd have until eleven, eleven-thirty at nighttime. It's no big deal.
Well, to you it's not a big deal, but to people up there, maybe it's a different story.
Yeah, I, I realize, but I think, I like the idea of informing as opposed to asking.
I would make a motion to allow the variance for these two events up with our noise bylaw.
All right, with, with honors on them to inform neighbors?
The neighbors.
Affected? Does it work?
Yep.
All in favor? Thank you very much. But I also feel that we could ask administration to review that, that noise bylaw. There's other items that are starting to come up in town that are of interest to us within that, that bylaw. And so if administration could review that bylaw, it would be.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Yes.
If I might on that, and I appreciate it, a couple of things maybe for light discussion tonight. Is it reasonable that events held at recreation facilities are considered heavier than those held in, for example, the middle of my cul-de-sac?
My point.
Right? Is, so, so when we look at amendments here, are we saying, look, you know, council will, do you simply, do you request administratively, for example, if you're holding and you're renting a facility for something and you want to hold an event that might contravene the noise bylaw, do we, do we deal with that administratively, for example, or does council want to know about all of them? And then do we say? I, I don't know. It's very tricky. I, I'm not exactly sure where to go with it in the fact that you want people to be compliant. That's what bylaws are for, is to get compliance, not to penalize.
Okay, for example, I can exactly see some kind of event that could happen in a cul-de-sac or on a street where somebody lives. Halloween. It could be a time where people are willing to have fun outside, on the street. I mean, I know right now they cannot fire fireworks and so I shouldn't say that, but I know it has happened. And I do that as a little bit of a neighborhood.
Yeah.
And it's supervised, there is proper safety around firing those things, but maybe it's not even allowed in town anymore. So, yeah, I can see that. But you could have a wedding, you could have a wedding party, you could have all sorts of things like that.
Yep.
Can I just, Jeff, you were just mentioning about how to deal with that. If we have the bylaw in place, I feel personally that administration should be able to deal with that kind of stuff.
That's what I think.
I mean, we're going to make the policy, we're going to do the bylaw, but you should be able to flex that and say, according to the bylaw, this is how things work. And so yes, or? So that, that starts to sound like a permitting process, that you can get a permit for an event in a residential neighborhood, for example. And we look at parking, safety, noise, time of event, and we can issue a permit based on some criteria. For example, so there's some criteria.
Yeah.
You know, and you look at getting a permit for such an event if it's going to violate the bylaw. It's one way to look at it. I think, I think you would see it in some communities. I can't think of an example, but it seems to ring a bell, but I don't know.
Maybe you can look at all those different options and come up with some recommendations.
But I would, I would assume that if I was having, I live in a condo, so I'm not going to have a block party, but I'm, I'm thinking if I was in a cul-de-sac and I was having a party and it was eleven-thirty, twelve o'clock, that if the neighbors were calling, wouldn't the bylaw officer go and, or whomever?
Or the RCs, they'll enforce the bylaw, yeah.
Care of that, right?
Yeah.
So I mean, if they don't have permission, there's things in place that would stop that from happening or?
Yeah, I believe you need legislation in place to support a peaceful neighbor, community and neighborhood. We, we have to intervene on noise bylaw reasonably frequently from a bylaw point of view.
Okay.
You know, and the RCMP lean on that as well. They lean on that bylaw.
So we, we just need a motion to direct administration to review that bylaw.
Well, I'll make that motion to direct administration to look at this.
Review the noise bylaw.
Review them.
Thank you, and come back with recommendations. Thank you. All in favor? Thanks, let's move on. The tax sale date, as, as explained in your background, we need to have a motion to approve August thirteenth as being the date for the tax sale.
Make a motion to set August thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen as the tax sale date and the reserve bids for Plan nine four one zero seven seven five, block twenty-eight, lot eight, at a hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars, and Plan four two two four G Y, block twenty, lot six and seven, P T N, at two hundred and forty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars.
Thank you. Questions? All in favor? Thank you very much. All right. Seven A, Second Avenue, West Speed. So if you, and crossing recommendation, I want to thank Brad for having taken the time to really look into it and to give us his input. You can see his preferred resolution would be, maybe what we need to do is have, first of all, a forty kilometer an hour all through the town. So like this, people don't have to scratch their head wondering, when is thirty, when is forty, when is fifty? That is an option that maybe we need to look at. The other recommendation is that we should look at a crosswalk between the post office and the pharmacy there. And that is something that I had said a long time ago. The reason council did not approve it at that time was because we could lose up to eight parking stalls. But I also think that maybe with the pharmacy having a little bit of land there, extra land.
Mix up.
We could maybe see if they would be willing to, to have that trade-off since they wanted also that crosswalk to start with. So your, your take on it, so there's two points. One is the limitation of speed all through town, same everywhere. Second one is the crosswalk. So Consular Drew, you wanted to say something?
I just had a couple of residents talk to me in the last week or two about a crosswalk in that area. So I, I think that's timely to talk about.
Yeah, that's something that we looked at at that time. There was no pharmacy and the land didn't belong to.
As for speed zones, they would stay the same at thirty in playground and elementary school, high school, et cetera. And I don't see the reason why you'd drop it from fifty to forty, except Fourth Avenue. That'd be the only thing that would, so I don't see why you'd want to drop it down to forty if you're going to have to go down to thirty. That's kind of the sticking point now, I think.
Okay, so essentially, it's to address a Second Avenue problem because without a crosswalk right now, fifty is too much of a speed because people could get knocked over and killed.
I agree with that.
Have we had that incident there before?
Yeah. We've had two people fall down on that street, I know, in the last five years.
Yeah. So let's deal with the crosswalk. I'm in support of the crosswalk.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so the crosswalk is a given.
So you need a motion to have council or administration enter into negotiations with the owner of the pharmacy.
To make up for loss of parking.
To make up for the loss of parking on the streets.
Yeah. Yeah.
And that's my motion.
Yeah, thank you, very good. So a question regarding that motion. See none? All in favor? Thank you. It's wonderful. It's something I wanted to see for yours. Maybe we'll get there.
I said in my background, I'd hoped to have a design. I didn't. Brad, and he started on Seventh Avenue, he hasn't even been in the office. But what I'll try and do is get a design, just so everybody's clear on the impact on parking on both sides of that, back to council. And, and I think if I go digging back a number of years to your first term, I think we had one. I just got to go dig through some old, we don't keep them all on the cloud like we do now, and I'll go dig through some old agendas. And I think there was one at the time, I vaguely recall.
I remember saying we needed a crosswalk because somebody may get killed. And next week, there was somebody killed on the front of the theater. It was not very funny.
Okay, so we'll get that prepared and I'll talk with Mr. Quentin about the land there.
Okay, so regarding the speed, maybe we need to leave this status quo at this point until we have that crosswalk put there, put the proper lights, and leave it alone until that happens. What's your feeling?
If we're going to have that crosswalk, we're going to have a button to push with the flashing lights so people are going, they know people are going across there? Is that what time temp us? Like at the grocery store and the provincial building there?
You know something? We're going to give that option to administration to look into the different design regarding that intersection, that crosswalk, because I'm no expert in that.
Brad and I had this discussion. I was the one that brought that up over here. I like the system that Raymond uses. It's much cheaper than the overheads and they're much more visible. So Brad was looking into that.
Sprobe-like.
And they're lower.
Yeah, they're good. I like, I saw them with the dating.
Brad was looking into that. I don't know what became of that, but.
Okay. Anyways, so maybe administration can further that.
Good idea.
And thank you to Brad for his report was good.
I guess while we're on speed limits, if I could bring one other thing up, actually dealing with my neighborhood, Seventh Street's the only other street besides Main Street that has a through road all the way from one end of town to the other. And there's a lot of traffic that's coming pretty fast down there. So that street, there's another issue right there, but something to think about, I guess. There's like six fifty kids on that street between elementary school and my house. And they blow down that street.
Yeah, well.
Once they've gone past a school zone, they just boogie on down the road to the golf course.
You know, it, it pays to remind all our citizens that safety should be the first concern, right?
Maybe we just need to have some of those speed limit sign things up there on that street.
I thought maybe children are playing, I don't know, something.
Yeah.
Slow them down. I mean, it's a rough road, slows them down a bit.
With signs, slow down kids, kids.
Speed bumps working?
Well, there's kind of a speed bumps.
No, miss, with speed bumps? All right. Okay, let's move on, council. Seven B, that's an interesting one. Southern Alberta Tourism Group. The C, the act of officer of Raymond, Greg Robinson, presented a new vision to replace what was then the Mormon Trail. The Mormon Trail was something that generated from Jeff and, who was with you, Jeff, and Alan, Alan Gibson, right? And Alan Gibson is a man who is very well versed into what creates good branding and what makes town click. So now, as you know, the term Mormon Trail as a designation doesn't really work anymore. So there's a need for rebranding. The term Southern Alberta Tourism is a very generic, lame term. But here was the issue. It was the eleventh hour and we were trying to access funding from the bad land for two different kind of opportunities we had. We needed a name. And so that became the name because we had the town of Milk River there. And the term Mormon is not appealing when you write grants. The minute you have a religious connotation in your application, you're instantly denied, apparently. So that is an interim kind of name that was used for a purpose to access funding.
You know, I don't understand why they are hesitant about using the term pioneer trail. They use, they talk about the pioneers coming up back and forth from you to off to here. I often hear that without using the Mormon term. And why is it such a problem for them to refer to people historically as pioneers? Because that's what they were.
It's been used quite a bit in other communities too. That's a part of the issue is it's being used so much in other communities as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, well.
Yeah, it's, but anyways.
Well, it's the Southern Alberta.
So essentially, what Greg went to a class and took a whole class on, on designation for tourism group and branding, and the Southern Alberta Tourism Group is not the brand. That is just a name that if somebody traveling was, or wanted to travel, was trying to access information, they want to travel in Southern Alberta and their tourism activities, so they would probably put tourism in Southern Alberta. And that name will crop up and under that would be each town. But the, the brand is still not there. Now, Alan Gibson came and visited this past month and told us that really it's unfortunate that we want to drop the name Mormon Trails because to him, that's make us absolutely unique. Another thing that he was saying is that now that the Lethbridge Tourism is kind of dead, what he's doing, what he's developing is a one-day package to showcase communities. And that project was extremely interesting and that was because of that project that we needed to access funding, to try to see if we can get into his packaging of featuring communities. But that doesn't still solve the issue as to, right now, we are giving fourteen thousand dollars between the Chautauqua and the Mormon Trail. Altogether, forty-nine thousand dollars has been given by four communities over the past three years. Do we want to carry that on? Or do you have any ideas? Do you need more time to reflect on it?
It's kind of, I've been on this board a little bit off and on, and to me, it seems like Chautauqua is a much bigger event to. to me, it seems like Chautauqua is a much bigger event than Sterling, McGrath, and Raymond than it is in Cardston. And we don't seem to have maybe their vision that they want with it, so.
The Chautauqua is a fourth year, this year, and we had committed $10,000 towards that for four years, that was our commitment. That commitment, what we need to decide, is that coming to an end? What are we doing? Councilor Selk.
I'm going to state the obvious, but we're investing more in this than we are in all of our other
Act Dev.
Regional Act Dev initiatives.
I agree with you. And that's an issue.
I agree.
And I don't know that we're getting any.
We didn't get our money back.
The town of Cardston doesn't have a problem with tourists coming to town. They're whizzing through town all day long, from the south, from the east and west. Our challenge, and if we put $14,000 into trying to get them to stay in town, that would be a better investment than throwing it into Chautauqua and whatever the SATG is.
Southern Alberta Tourism Group.
Again, that's kind of my point. I feel like we are not, well, for whatever reason, we're not embracing it like the other three communities further east are. And whether that's a good thing or a bad thing, that's neither there.
I don't know. I think for Sterling and Raymond and McGrath, that works for them because it's an opportunity for them to market themselves and attract tourists to town because they need to. We, on the other hand, have a different problem.
It's retaining them.
It's retaining the ones that we have that are whistling through town.
Yeah, I hear you.
We have a number of them. There isn't the sort of tourist flow through Raymond, through Sterling, and through McGrath that there is through Cardston.
We have the major highway, yeah.
So, are you at the point where you would prefer to separate from that group?
I think we need to give it some serious consideration.
Okay. So, at this point, we should maybe not make a decision? Should we maybe try to understand a little bit better what the future would hold, being hooked up with town outside of our borders far east?
You've been pretty heavily involved in this the last few months, what is your feeling on it?
My feeling is that there is no certainty as to what they want to do. There is a sense that in unity, there is probably more strength. The problem is, it's not easy to have $50,000 at your disposal and to be 100% sure you're going to get $50,000 worth of return. And that is where tourism and Act Dev has a same problem. You can never be 100% sure it will come back to you.
I mean, in reading Jeff's background or behind this, he makes a very valid point that are they trying to reinvent the Chinook Country Tourist Association?
And that's a problem for me because it didn't work for them.
So, are we creating another tourism association? Are we creating another entity that I don't know that we're going to get any more benefit out of it than we have out of all of the other, the Chinook Country Tourist Association and
Or the Badland or whatever.
Badlands, or?
And that's a problem, right?
My feeling was that when it was the Mormon Trail, you could see the connection with the four communities.
Absolutely.
Now that the Mormon Trail's going out the door,
It's gone.
I kind of support the idea that we could take that $14,000 and have the initiative within our town. We don't have a problem getting tourists through here like they would there. They're not going to be happy with this, but.
Councilor Brown?
I agree with everything that's being said. I strongly believe that, I don't see the point to putting this off. Why not make a motion? It seems like, what I'm hearing around the table is that the money that we set aside for what we thought it was, isn't now what we assumed it was anymore. And so, that money could be spent in other areas where hopefully we would get some more economic development growth out of it.
Like Festival of Lights?
Or whatever, I'm just saying.
Whatever, right?
Okay. Can administration give us a little bit of enlightenment? To help us with our discussion there?
Wow.
Opinion.
Well, we have your, we have your opinion, but enlighten us a little bit as to, as to, from a perspective living
Right.
such an organization, what exactly can we do afterwards?
So, the implications are unknown, but it's, and you saw in my background, I struggle with this a little bit because frankly, I would still be comfortable moving forward with a Mormon Trail initiative. And I recognize that the, I actually don't buy that using the word Mormon eliminates us from grants and funding for initiatives because it's not a theological initiative. It's not a proselyting initiative. It's simply a historical one. So, I don't know that I buy into that very much, and I could be wrong. But actually, the church is moving away from using the term Mormon. This group doesn't necessarily have to, and it would further differentiate them from the church by continuing to use the name. But I recognize there's some cultural faux pas in the whole thing. I get it. My fear, and it's what Councilor Selk said, is that recreating Chinook country is duplicating a model we already know will be unsuccessful if it's not almost solely funded by the public sector. And there's a part of me that says if I took 14, let's say $10,000 a year, and met with our tourism stakeholders here in Cardston and said, okay, Carriage House Theater, how could we partner with you to enhance your marketing or enhance your offering? Okay, Remington Museum, what could we do with you to partner to enhance your marketing, your offering to attract visitors? Okay, Golf Course, could we put some additional marketing dollars into the Golf Course? Could we invest that same money on an acutely local level? And try and retain the people that are coming, you know, we're talking about thousands a day that are driving up and down Highway 2 and 5, and retain them in the community? Now, I don't want to make it sound like I want to abandon any regional approach. For heaven's sakes, I was one of the, I was the initiator of the regional approach. So there's value there, but if we're not using the Mormon Trail moniker, or a really similar moniker to suggest that there was a unique settlement of unique people that live in a unique area, I'm not personally very interested in promoting a generic brand.
And that was the whole, the whole presentation of Alan Gibson at the last meeting. Him, he say, would be a very big mistake. Yes.
I agree with Councilor Brown. But there's one thing that I would like to recommend. Mayor, you kind of know the feeling of council now. If you went to one more meeting and saw what their pitch was, and if you went, yeah, you know what? I don't think we're going to buy into that. I'd be comfortable with your assessment of that, and then come back and we can go forge ahead with the way we're feeling right now.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we have another meeting coming up.
I'm sure you do, they seem to be every other week. So that's actually got me a little, in my craw a little bit as well because we're now the admin support for the group on both committees.
Yeah.
Chautauqua and Mormon Trail.
And they barely come here.
And, and it's consuming a lot of time, and that's had me a bit frustrated as an aside anyway. But I actually appreciate what you're saying there, Councilor Selk. I actually think the town of Cardston holds a extraordinary amount of influence around that table, between the four communities when it comes to tourism promotion. They do look to us, and we hold a lot of weight there. The tone of the conversation may be a bit different if we were suggesting we wanted to look at something different. It might. And maybe status quo isn't how we want to be either. You know, that might not be ideally our best situation either, but I think it may change some of the conversation, or at least give everyone something to think about.
Yeah. All right, so we'll go ahead with that recommendation and we'll report our feelings, collective feelings regarding their offering. Okay. 7C is an interesting story. We are realizing that in order to be able to function into a building that is called a town office, you really should have a motion to be doing that. Councilor Drew?
Who keeps coming up with all these things?
We need to make a motion or a resolution?
Yeah, you need it, you need it.
Resolution that we have quotes there.
Okay. So I'd like to make the following resolution that the facility located at 673rd Street Avenue West, commonly known as the Civic Center, be designated as the Town of Cardston's municipal office.
Thank you. We changed this building from a church to a town office without officially recognizing that we did so. So, all in favor? Thank you. It's fixed.
How do we function all these years?
The only reason this has been an issue is I know we're going to get audited on it next year. So it's a minor thing, like it wasn't going to be this was going to kill it. I just know it's one of the audit questions that we're getting next year, so.
What did we call ourselves before, still the social center?
No, it doesn't matter what we call it, we can call it whatever we want.
You just needed a resolution.
Designate your town, your council chamber as your town hall.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Okay, 7D, Chief Mountain Regional Waste Authority request. So, if you read the request, you will see that the asking is for the different municipality to lease their building to the authority rather than have authority take ownership of our transfer station. Did I say that correctly? Councilor Selk, I'm going to give that to you because help me understand, or help the rest of council understand why that is so after we passed so many months trying to wreck our head.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. As you recall, we passed six motions regarding the Chief Mountain Regional Solid Waste Authority in order for it to proceed forward to become a commission. The last resolution was that we would just give the transfer station to the commission, and we would wipe our hands of it, and that would be theirs forever. There were some communities within the authority who had concerns about just giving up their rights to that piece of property because moving down the road, should they ever decide to withdraw from the commission, they wouldn't have a place to take their garbage to because it would then belong to the commission. So the notion was, why don't we lease you the land? We hold control of it in terms of the ownership, but the commission would then look after the maintenance and the staffing. Those terms will be worked out in the future. But that's sort of the direction that they would like to go. And that way, we're consistent. They just want to make sure that we're consistent throughout all of our municipalities, that it will be leased rather than just given.
All right. So, Councilor, do you need a motion to that effect?
Yes, we do. And Jeff, I can't remember what the original motion was when we just basically said we were going to give it to them.
So, do we need to rescind that one?
Do we need to rescind that motion?
Let me find the motion number on that one.
Okay.
And we'll try and do that before the end of the meeting.
Okay.
I'll go grab the eight motion number.
So, can, we rescind it with you adding the number?
I have another recommendation then.
Go ahead.
Why don't we recess for a few minutes?
Yeah, and I'll go find that.
Okay. All right, we recess?
On his way back with the food right now.
Okay, so 10-minute recess is going to be it?
And make a motion to recess for 10 minutes.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much.